Right, salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, what if? I want to start with the protocol.
See no action taken?
Oh, yeah. We had our closed session. There was no action taken, there's no action items to be taken, so.
All right, thank you. I will go ahead and start our meeting with our board meeting protocol tonight. Our session is being recorded and it's open to the public and being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. For public comments, public comments are three minutes per agenda item, and the board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make comment via Zoom teleconference, notify the board meeting assistant through the chat box feature in Zoom. You can also use the raise hand feature in Zoom during the meeting, and you'll be identified by the display name in Zoom when called upon to speak. To make public and to make comment in person, there's public comment cards by the door. Please indicate the item that you would like to address and give that to our board meeting assistant, Ms. Bach. Email public comment can be emailed to the superintendent 24 hours before the board meeting, and they would be posted on our website with our agenda, and they're limited to 450 words. We have not received any written email public comments for this meeting. And board vote and connectivity, each motion shall be followed by a roll call vote for the action items. And should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes, and our regular board meetings shall be adjourned by 10:30 PM.
Pretty much, begin with one, the E, communication. We're going to skip down to reports, we'll go with the McCaffrey. You guys have some students here, so we'll, you guys go first.
We do, we have teachers Christina Lowry and Carrie Montgomery, and some students from McCaffrey. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Yant, Cabinet members and administrators. My name is Christina Lowry, and tonight, Mrs. Montgomery and myself, as well as our student guest speakers, are going to give you a little synopsis of our March 2023 Washington DC trip. I've been the Washington DC coordinator since 1998, and I've relied on the help of the Workshops Foundation to guide us on our amazing and unforgettable trips, and this year was definitely no exception. And we have always appreciated the board's support in giving us the opportunity to see the sights of our nation's capital during the school year, typically in October. Because of this opportunity, we are able to take in so much more and maximize the time that we have there, because we're not competing with the tourist season. This truly is a trip of a lifetime, and I still have former students talking about how much they appreciated the opportunity to see our history curriculum come to life. So with that, we're going to start our presentation, and it was 54 students, six days, three planes, two buses, and one trip of a lifetime.
Good evening, council. My name is Maritza Revolo, and I will be sharing with you day one and two of the DC trip. The travel to DC was a little bit nerve-wracking, but I had a feeling of independence, knowing that I would be making most of my own decisions from here on out. The first memorial we visited was the Air Force Memorial. It's a newly built memorial, and it was very fascinating to learn how it was dedicated to those who served in the Air Force. We then had lunch at the workshops orientation, which are where our tour guide shared with us everything we would need for the week, how to ask questions, what was expected of us, and what our chaperones would be doing. On day two, we visited Mount Vernon, the Arlington National Cemetery, the Pentagon Memorial, and the Jefferson Memorial. Mount Vernon was a very cool experience, knowing that I was walking through President George Washington's house where he used to walk through. This is a separate place in Mount Vernon where we could watch a movie about the Revolutionary War. Then we visited the Arlington National Cemetery, where our tour guide walked us through some of the more visited sites and tombstones. We then watched the changing of the un, changing of the guard at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, which I loved how we were part of the ceremony by standing. Then we visited the Pentagon Memorial, and I loved how they honored those who died during the attack of 9/11. They made multiple benches, and depending on where the bench is faced, it honored those who died either outside, if the benches were pointed away from the Pentagon, or inside, if the benches were pointing towards the Pentagon. Our last visit on day two was the Jefferson Memorial, where we got to learn a lot more about Thomas Jefferson and how he created the Declaration of Independence. This trip was so fascinating to learn, and it was a great experience.
Good evening, council. My name is Daphne Nahar Meza, and I will be sharing day three of DC. What we experienced at Washington DC was the Saudi Arabian Embassy World War II Memorial, Holocaust Memorial Museum, National Archives, and the Kennedy, the JFK Theater Center. As shown on the slide, we got to visit the Saudi Arabian Embassy and got to experience and learn about their culture and how and how their ties to their country make peace with our country. As seen on the right picture, they were kind enough to demonstrate cultural clothing appearance. Another place another place we got to visit was the World War II Memorial. In the left picture, you can see a few monuments. The monuments represent the states that got involved in World War II. On the right, each star represents 1,000 lives lost in World War II. After visiting the World War II Memorial, our next destination was the Holocaust Museum. The Holocaust Museum was one of the places that had the most affecting impact on me as I learned what brutal torture those who got captured had to go through. Walking around the museum was a very emotional experience, seeing all the names and pictures of those who were taken and held against their own will. The pictures of the shoes indicate that they were the last witnesses, and since they were not made of blood and flesh, they were, they had been in void hellfire, unlike those who were captured as seen on the quote. As we left the Holocaust Museum, we, we traveled to the National Archives Museum. We were able to explore and examine the founding documents that created the US. The following documents were the Bill of Rights, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, along with the first English document that limited the power of King, King John, the Metacarga. Part of that. Sadly, we were not, we were told that we weren't allowed to have photography in the building, so the documents were, we're not, we don't have any image of the documents. Lastly, we visited John F. Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. The theater wasn't, the theater had a museum explaining President Kennedy, who President Kennedy was. The museum was a wonder and extremely beautiful. To finish off our day, we were able to enter the theater and watch a play called Sheer Madness. That's a wrap-up of day three at Washington DC. This was a very touching and emotional impact on me going to DC and learning so much about our history and what created our nation. Thank you so much.
And we're only halfway through on our trip. Day four, day four started out really early and wound up really late. But day four, we went to Capitol Hill, the Supreme Court, the Library of Congress, the American History Museum, Ford's Theater, Peterson House, and the National Portrait Gallery. And students got the opportunity to go inside and tour the Capitol Building. And we were able to see Statuary Hall, we were able to see the portrait gallery inside the Rotunda, where we were able to see a lot of paintings of founding moments in our country. And we were able to go to the visitor center. We went down below and visited the crypt where George Washington was going to originally be buried, before he was buried at Mount Vernon. And we ended up with a meet and greet with our Senator Alex Padilla. So that was really impactful for the students and for us, and we got to ask him a few questions. You guys will see a picture there of the students in front of the Supreme Court. Unfortunately, with some of the restrictions lately, we weren't able to go into the Supreme Court, but we had to get a photo op there. And then down on the bottom right is a picture of the Library of Congress. So we went to visit that as well. We also went to the American History Museum. Students got to tour around the American History Museum, where they saw things like the flag from the War of 1812 that the Star Spangled Banner was written about. They also got to visit things that deal with American pop culture, and they had a really, really neat experience to walk through the price of freedom Americans at war from the American Revolution all the way to our current wars. So it was very impactful on the students, and they appreciated the time in the American History Museum. We also went to Ford's Theater where Lincoln was assassinated. And right directly across the street, we went to Peterson House where he was taken the night of his assassination, and he passed away the next morning. So students were able to go in through that boarding house, and then it turns into a museum. So they had a lot of questions, and they were really respectful, and it was a neat experience for them to see that. And we also went to the National Portrait Gallery. This was a first for all of us. And we got to see so many different paintings of famous Americans, as well as a lot of people that the students have studied in their seventh grade world history class. So this was a really neat experience as well. And Mrs. Montgomery is going to talk about day five and six.
All right, thank you. So each day was definitely a whirlwind. Day five started out at the US Institute of Peace. Then we went to the National Museum of African American History and Culture, the Air and Space Museum, and many, many memorials and monuments on the Capitol Mall. So for us, this was a first at the Peace Institute, and the students took a class actually on conflict resolution. And it was amazing, just the presentation was great, the kids were really involved. Ms. Lowry and I received a lot of curriculum that we're bringing back, a lot of things that we're going to try to implement within our classes, definitely kind of civic space problem solution. And it was just amazing for, it was the first time we'd gone there, and we're definitely hoping to make that a part of the trip each year. Then we spent two hours at the African American Smithsonian. This was my first time visiting there, and it was very moving. There, there's so much to see. I feel like I could have spent probably an entire day. It's four stories, and you actually start at the bottom, and it begins with kind of the plight of slavery in the Americas, and it goes all the way to modern times, ending with Barack Obama's presidency and just everything in between. There's so many artifacts, and there's just hands-on exhibits, and just a million different things to read and touch and see, and the kids really took their time. And I really enjoyed walking around with many of them, and they'd ask a lot of questions, and it was really touching thing. All right. And here's some of the exhibits that were in the African American Smithsonian. Then after that, we headed to the Air and Space Museum, which is always a hit with the kids. Everything, air travel from the Wright Brothers all the way up to modern space simulators, and even there's now exhibits on drones, which I thought was kind of interesting, and how drones are being utilized in the United States. This one is definitely a favorite of all the students, as well as the teachers and adults. Then we went on to the Capitol Mall. We saw many monuments. We went and saw the Lincoln Memorial, the Korean Memorial, the Vietnam War Memorial as well, which it was, it was really interesting too, because I've, I think I've been going on the trip since 2013. I think that was my first year. And the reflecting pool outside of the Lincoln Memorial was empty and drained, and we'd never seen that before. So that was kind of a different thing. We're telling the kids, like, if you ever come back, we don't know if you'll ever see it like this. So they got a lot of cool pictures with that as well. And then we, we then went to Iwo Jima that day, as well as the MLK Junior Memorial, which is just amazing, and the quotes on the side of the wall fleeting in are just awesome. And then we wrapped up our last day was a whirlwind, still going on. We went to the National Cathedral, a quick stop at the White House, the Natural History Museum, and then we made it back to Galt. And, yeah, I know, and so it, it's, it's a good tired though. And so the National Cathedral is a non-denominational Gothic cathedral, funded completely by private donors, and it is immense. There's multiple chapels in there. There's, there's a crypt, there's even a President Woodrow Wilson is buried there. The stained glass is just amazing. There is even in one of the stained glass windows, there is an, I believe asteroid. There's an, NASA donated a small asteroid that's in one of them. And we had the luck of our tour guide was actually the son of one of the stone carvers of the cathedral. So that was really cool to get his kind of perspective on things. And then we, we made it to the White House. We tried to go early, and there was actually a motorcade, and there was someone coming to visit the president, and we couldn't go earlier. So then we went later. It's a little rainy. The only rain for the whole trip was this day. Unfortunately, it's kind of just a lottery system if you get to tour, and we didn't get to tour inside this year. We ended up at the Natural History Museum. The Hope Diamond is there. There's just all the, I love looking at all the different animals, the plants, just the minerals. Everything there is amazing. And then we made it home. And the kids, I know, were tired. It was an amazing trip. But I just wanted to thank all of you for your continued support of this trip. For over 20 years, eighth graders in Galt have been able to learn more about our nation's history, civics, government, and culture. After chaperoning for many years, I can say without a doubt that this trip enriches the students' understanding of our history. Students get the opportunity to see our nation's history come alive over the course of the week. Experienced students grow, gaining a new level of independence, and form bonds and friendships that continue past middle school and high school. This would not be possible without your support. So thank you very much. Wow, thank you for sharing. It's amazing what you fit in in six days.
That, that was a very impressive schedule you guys had.
We usually start off about eight o'clock in the morning, and then we are back around 10:30.
Oh, wow.
It's packed every day. Fifty miles we walked this week, or that week, so, yeah. So thank you again for your support and letting us go during the school year. We really appreciate that.
Thank you for taking the students each year. Thank you.
My son's going next year. Where are you guys? The older one, they had COVID, so he didn't get to go.
And ladies, the, the two of you that presented, outstanding presentations, very nicely done. Good job.
Much. Anybody have any more comments or questions? Yeah, once again, thank you very much. Good presentation.
Thank you. And thank you, parents, for bringing them out tonight.
Moving back to communications on E.
Yes, so this is from our Sacramento County Office of Education. This is related to our 22, 23 second period interim report, budget report, that was presented to the board a few months ago. And although this information now is, is old, because we're getting ready to present to you in June, a new budget, it's, we want to report that we had a positive certification, which is the certification that you want from your county office. And so this was Dave Gordon's notification to the board in the district that we were positive with our budget for second interim.
Any questions? I'm guessing there's no public comments cards. Okay. Moving on to G, LCAP, goal number one, the Gifted and Talented Education Program Plan Update.
You know, Mr. Kago, I think what I will do first, we have the LCAP update under reports. I'll go ahead and do that first, and then we'll move on to the gifted and talented, if that's okay. So you have in your board packet a one-page LCAP highlight summary, and where it's definitely LCAP season, we are on track to publicly put that on our website here by June 1st. And we've also shared a draft with our county office and waiting for some feedback there. So what I wanted to do at this point is share some highlights with you, really related to our goals and our actions. So our first goal is engaging learners through a focus on equity, access, and academic rigor with inclusive practices in a variety, variety of environments. And we are not changing that goal. We've had that goal for a couple of years now. And what has changed are some of our actions. And so I want to highlight some of what we are, are committed to do this next year. Really, we've been expanding learning opportunities after school through clubs, and also expanding summer services. We have increased certificated leadership capacity with TOSSAs that will be actually assigned to school sites, and based on feedback from our educators, that our TOSSAs will be working directly with students in the area of literacy, math, and MTSS services. We continue to develop the dual-language immersion program, and that will expand to kindergarten next year, two classes in kindergarten at Valley Oaks. And it will continue, of course, at Fair Sight for preschool and transitional kindergarten. We've increased partnerships with Core Learn and the Sacramento County of Office of Education to provide professional development in the area of literacy and math. We started that partnership this year, but we will continue that into next year. We continue to allocate funds to reduce class size reduction in TK3. We are developing an avid pilot program at the elementary level at one school that has reached out that wants to try this. Of course, we have Avid at McCaffrey. But you, you definitely can have an Avid program at elementary site too. And so we are going to do that pilot that at Lake Canyon next year. We are going to increase professional development training for our classified staff that serve in special education classrooms. So our special education instructional assistants will receive training next year on our Wednesday afternoons. And this really came out of the need in working with our county office and that we're in differentiated assistance for students with disabilities. We need to academically improve in that area. Professional development will also be related to the math framework and practices to prepare for a 2024 math curriculum pilot. And I wanted to ask our Director of Curriculum Cleo de Toro Anguiano just to highlight just the timeline for that pilot.
So as Lois already shared, so in partnership with SCOE, we will enter into this two-year launch with SCOE. The first year will involve learning more about the new math framework and, and the changes and the shifts that that framework will provide to us. It is our goal to review math materials that are out there in year one and to identify two that we will pilot during year two, so 2023, 23, 24. And the goal there is to, again, implement those two math programs and to bring to you a recommendation for math program adoption. So it's, it's a lot of learning to ensure that all of us have the right lens to look through various materials to ensure that we purchase what is, is aligned to the framework, to the standards, and what will meet our needs. So we're excited about that. We're hoping to have 14 teachers participate. And right now, we have four that have already indicated that they would, you know, really enjoy doing this. So we're, we're waiting for a few more to, to do this work.
Thank you, Cleo. And then last summary of action for, for goal number one would be the expansion of exploratory classes. We started that this year with the expansion of Spanish as a foreign language option. But then we're also increasing exploratory for career technical education teachers, CTE, and art teacher at the middle school, so expanding exploratory opportunities for students. LCAP goal two, promoting whole learner development through social and emotional learning, SEL, opportunities in a variety of safe and supportive environments. We are continuing with full-time either social worker or counselor at each of our school sites, and continuing to partner with SCOE on supporting us with mental health clinicians. We're hoping to have three in our district next year. We currently have two. We're hoping that we will have three. One would be added at Valley Oaks. We currently have a mental health clinician at Greer and McCaffrey, and hopefully next year at Valley Oaks. So it's definitely a need. We'll also have two counselors at McCaffrey next year. We're also looking at the need, there's definitely a need to increase behavior support in our campuses. We are going to continue with the registered behavior technicians that we hired this year. We're going to continue with that position. And we are also looking at higher, adding another behavior analyst in our district. We currently have one right now, but there is need, there's need for behavior, more, more intensive behavior support and our stu, for students, and to support teachers in their classroom as well. So we are looking at increasing that next year. Continue with district-wide implementation of the social, emotional learning curriculum that we use, and also looking to increase the partnership with the Galt Police Department and Galt High School. We currently have one school resource officer in our district, and we're looking at increasing that, having two, the second one we would share with Galt High. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, that is a report item, but that's in our LCAP. So any questions or comments on this right now? The, the LCAP will be brought to the board in June. We'll have a public hearing first, and then the following night, we have a, a potential adoption of an LCAP.
I just had a couple of questions on the bullets. So for the Avid pilot, I'm assuming that if that's successful, then it potentially would be expanded to other schools, or they would assess and consider a recommendation.
Yes, yes, it could be, could be an option. The teacher in special assignment that's going to be serving Lake Canyon, she's coming from our middle school, and she has experience in the Avid program. And so that's kind of where this started. She has the experience. And so when working with the school administration, they're going to send a group of teachers to the training this summer, and, and we'll see how it goes at elementary.
And then just the last two bullets on the math, what grades was that, or is it?
It'll be TK8.
Okay. And then the curriculum, if a curriculum is open, if someone wanted to request a copy of that, they could.
Yeah, there's part of that process is, is somewhat of a public viewing or public hearing. We'll have to post where the curriculum will be. You have to have it. Last time, I remember we headed the district office. I think we had it each school site. There's multiple locations that we have to have the material available. And now I'm sure most of it's probably online. We can share links so the public can look at it online. I'm sure that's going to be a big option with an adoption nowadays, too.
And then just my last question on the last bullet, the CTE teacher. Is that in a particular field, or that's to be determined?
You know, it's to be determined based on who we end up hiring. We're having those conversations with our applicants that we're interviewing. It just really kind of depends on their credential and their experience and their, their expertise. Yeah, we really like to start an FFA program or piggyback with the high school on an FFA program, and we are in collaboration with the high school staff on that, that that's ultimately a goal. We would love, we have that, the land there behind the school, and we already partner with a teacher there to, to farm some of that land. And so just could really be really exciting what we could do together if we actually had a CTE teacher. So, and they're willing to help us get started.
Other questions? To, I guess, to the talented, talented program?
All right.
Thank you. We would like to provide you with an update regarding the development of our gate program. Both Laura Papino and Ellen Morris have taken the lead with this project and Laura is ready to share our progress so far.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm just gonna, we have a PowerPoint for you. I'm just gonna kind of go through the PowerPoint and then ask for questions when I'm done. So last school year in the late second trimester, Mrs. Morris, Ellen and I went to all the elementary schools and tested all third graders across the district. And so the, the test we used that Cleo, Ellen and I decided we wanted to go with is the acronym is the N-NAT three, which is the Ned Leary Nonverbal Ability Test. It's a standardized test. It's used throughout the nation and it's used to assess for gifted and talented. It assesses using nonverbal reasoning and general problem solving skills. It's considered culturally neutral as it contains minimal use of language and directions and does not require reading. So this is really nice because we, we also tested our students in receiving special education services. Cause there are children that are twice exceptional that need to have the ability to take a nonverbal test, which is a passion of mine. So. It incorporates abstract shapes and designs allow us for an unbiased scoring regardless of primary language, education, socioeconomic background. Excellent. So the test format and descriptors, it's 48 questions. It's 30 minutes to administer, can be given on paper or online. We use the online version. And the question types are pattern completion, serial reasoning, reasoning by analogy and spatial visualization. So the initial launch was last year. Again, it was Ellen and myself. We identified 10 children across the elementary schools. You see the numbers up there. Notification was given to administrators, reports were sent to sites and parent letters were sent home for those qualifying students. And the services which were implemented this year were in development. Just jumping back into gate after many years. So phase one, this, this year, again, Ellen and I across the district went to all the sites administered the test. We have 17 identified gate students. And again, administrators and sites were notified and sent, letters went out to the newly identified families. They're identified in synergy, in cumulative files and clustered on class rosters. So next year will be implementation phase two. I will be the administrative lead, working with our teachers on special assignment to, to begin an implementation. So for the 23, 24 school year, we don't have new numbers yet. But again, same notification and communications with sites, families and synergy, et cetera. So what we will implement this coming year with the TOSAs will be direct services provided to students, project based activities. We will start with an interest inventory given to all the students. And that will help the TOSAs and myself drive where we go next. There will be progress monitoring all year and identification of curriculum and professional learning opportunities for all of us. Next slide. So future plans. We are thinking of district wide gate family nights, community involvement, engaging field trips. There's been a lot of brainstorming, but we're still in the very beginning development stages. So any questions or comments? I'm excited about this opportunity. As a parent of gate kids who were very different types of gate kids, this excites me a lot to think about bringing this back and really meeting needs of students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Laura. Thank you, Laura.
LCAP goal number two, the CAL SEHLS survey results.
Yes, thank you. CAL school survey results, just giving you a little snapshot right now. There'll be more detailed information for you in the LCAP and then also in the SIPSAS, the school single plans that the principals are working on. Their individual school site data will be in those SIPSAS that will be presented to the board in June as well. So just want to give a, a high level summary of what the data looks like. We, of course, we gave this survey in March. All students in fifth through eighth grade staff and parents were invited to take the survey. We did note that all of the groups participating, students, staff and parents, the participation rate did increase from 2022. So that was good. We still want it to be a little bit higher, but at least it's going up. Really would like to get more parents, but it, it went up. So that's great. Some of the strengths, this one page outlines the strengths that we looked at. It's outlined for you, broken down by fifth and sixth grade and also seventh and eighth grade. But some of them that were similar across all of the grade levels. High expectations from the adults in schools, high academic motivation, understanding or clarity of rules at school. Positive student learning environment and caring adult relationships were strengths for all of this students at, at each level. And then when you look at your staff surveys and you look at your elementary parent surveys, some, some of the similarities in the strengths. Were having caring adult relationships on campus and then rating that you felt your school was safe for the children. So those were definitely strengths. At the middle school parent survey, it was higher for parent involvement. And the teachers are responsive to the child's social and emotional needs. And that they're providing parents with resources to support the social emotional needs of their children. So those were some of the, the strengths that were highlighted. And then what the board also has, you have just the summary pages for each of the surveys. And it's broken down by elementary, by middle school, by parents and staff. It's also broken down by grade level, but you have the overall percentage for the questions that we really look at to indicate our school climate. So if there's any questions about that, anything you would, anything that stood out to you? And again, this is district wide level and the, the school level will be in the SIPSAS.
Do you have any questions?
We have some, you know, our, our schools, our staff, you know, they're just doing a wonderful job. Some of these, when you look at the percentages, you know, it depends on the question. Some of the questions, the goal is a 50%. Some of the questions are an 80%, depending on if they're counting agree or strongly agree. But for a lot of these areas, if the goal is 50%, we're already in the high 40s or 49, 50%. You know, if you look at, you know, our students treated with respect, that's already at 50% at the elementary level. And just have some really great scores to be proud of. And, and when we had the presenter come and, and talk with us about our scores, give us a little professional development, met with all of our administrators. You know, she commented on that, that we were just, we're continuing to see growth in this area. And the two, two big ones is caring, is carry, having to carry an adult. And really the safety. Yeah. So they measure statewide, nationwide, you know, academic and how students, not just academic, but how they feel about their school experience. And if they're successful is directly correlated to having caring adult relationships with, with staff. And so we're doing a really good job in that area.
Questions? Survey results? Did them at McCaffrey? Then we'll go on to the groundbreaking ceremony.
Yes, groundbreaking ceremony. So I wanted to start by thanking SMB James for hosting the event. It's our, you know, we've done a lot of work with Measure K funds over the last few years, but this is the first new construction that, that we've, we've done with these funds. And so it's just really exciting. And so we were out there, we had two trustees that were there with us. We had staff, school staff and we had students, we had district staff, Nicole and I, and maintenance and grounds were out there as well. And there's some pictures here for you. They did just a great job. They've already removed the four portables in the back and they've cleared the site to get ready. They've done as much as they can at this point. And so they had the tractors out there. They had the pictures. They had these wonderful golden shovels. You'll see some closeups of these shovels. I think the next one even, yeah, they had the district logo, they had their logo and then they had the architect. Yeah, it was very special. The kids just, the kids wanted to take them home. And they had Valley Oaks Elementary School on the handle there. They let us keep them. Mr. Nelson kept one for the office. I took one, I think Nicole took, I don't even know where they all went, but they probably had about 15 of those shovels. It was very nice. We just go through a few of the slides. So those were the students that were chosen. I think one per grade level and there's administration, Laura Marquez and David Nelson. There's some, some of our trustees joined in and Nicole and I, it was, it was fun. Our group just gets a little bit larger than you, you've got some of the contractors now and you have your architect in there. Students and yeah, it was, it was really special. They had sandwiches for afterwards. And we had our maintenance and our grounds crew that got in there and said a few words thanking everybody. Mr. Kegel did as well. And, and I wanted to thank also Galt Herald. Matthew was there for a nice presentation and write up in the Galt Herald last week about it. Thank you. He did a good job with that. And thank you to the community and our taxpayers because we're able to, to do these facility projects because of bond measures, really.
Yeah, that was, that was very, it was a very good ceremony. I was there, I was talking to the, the maintenance men and it was just like the maintenance, the stuff they do, it's, it's incredible. I mean, from moving sprinklers to, they already tell me everything they needed to do, right? They had some power boxes. They had to do a bunch of different stuff. I'm just like, that's, that's incredible. Is there five?
We have three maintenance workers and two and a half grounds. Yeah.
So they're all, they're all working together as a team and the stuff they do, it was, it was incredible because they had to move the sprinklers. Whole sprinkler system, digging all up and all that. So.
They saved the district probably, I don't know what $40,000 or something I heard Nicole, a lot, they save the district a lot of money with some of the work that they did to get ready. So, yeah.
I need a huge shout out to those gentlemen doing what they do.
Yeah.
But it was also fun. The, the kids were all excited. It was neat seeing the, the students there and the one gentleman, the safety guy was all.
Oh, yes.
The safety class about the, having safety classes for kids and stuff. So they can get people out to, to do the educational thing for the kids. So it was very well, very well put together.
Yeah. Safety ambassador program is what he said.
Yeah, the kids are always excited about getting those vests. So that was neat. Yeah. So. Casey, you want to add anything?
It was just, it was a very nice ceremony. SMB, I've never seen a company so motivated and they really seem like they're so good with children. I mean, it just seemed like they enjoy their work. It was, it was very uplifting, just their company. It was very nice.
Point, Casey. Good. Very good. Yeah. And they're going to be building the track for.
Yes, that's something that I'll, I'll bring to report as we get closer to it and pictures and things. But he did SMB James Silas is, he's the, what the president and he is also a parent in our district. He has children at Marengo and I believe McCaffrey now and their company likes to give back. And so he said, since he will have staff and contractors here in Galt this summer, he wants to put in a track at Marengo. And so he's working with Mrs. Porter and Mr. Jumper and he's going to put in a dirt track. I think maybe similar to what Lake Canyon has. In collaboration with the PTA or the PTO club, they've been trying to raise money for that at Marengo for a while. And so he's going to, or SMB James is going to donate what they need to get that going at no cost to the district. Yeah.
And SMB James is, is highly involved with the community as well. So I was saying at that ceremony, like they're, they back our, I forgot youth baseball, you know, their, their names like on the scoreboard, they back. They've donated a lot of their time and money to, to, to the youth of this, of this town as well. So.
They have. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Moving right along.
Other reports?
Okay. So a school resource, resource officer, I touched on this. We would like to have one more that would support all of our schools. We don't know exactly yet what that would look like, but we would be sharing, if we're able to bring on another school resource officer, we would be sharing the officer with the high school district. So we would have to figure out what that would look like. But I have no, no worries that we wouldn't be able to work out a collaborative schedule. If we commit to this, it is a, a three year plan. It would be a three year MOU with the police department. If they were to hire somebody, we would split it three ways. The high school, elementary and the police department, the city paying a third. It would be approximately an additional $52,000 a year. If, if we're able to do this, we use supplemental concentration right now. So really it's doubling. That's what we pay now 52,000 a year. So it'd really be doubling that. So it'd be about a hundred thousand dollars of a commitment for school resource officers. We feel that we do need it. They support us, you know, more than ever. They're, we call them a lot and they help us with, with home visits. They help us with discipline. They help with welfare checks, being visible, positive role model on campus for the students. Really appreciate it, especially at McCaffrey when they're just visible at lunch and passing period. And the current school resource officer has been really good about going to the elementary sites as well. Being visible for the elementary students. And so it's something that we feel it is in our LCAP if the board approves it. The police, the city is working on a grant right now. If they get a grant, potentially could reduce that cost. So they said they, they should know pretty soon if, if they're going to be awarded the grant so that, that could be decreased.
Any questions? We'll go to other report number two, the city and schools together, cast.
Okay. We had our cast meeting. Oh, and I need to let you know, you, the, the agenda that is in your packet, that is the, that's our agenda from our March meeting. So we are going to give you the agenda from our May meeting. Oh, they look almost identical. And we will update the, the packet online. But just a, a brief summary of our meeting, schools, cast is schools and cities together. So it's the high school, elementary and the city and two trustees from both districts that attend and council members, the members are there for you. We always have updates, district and city updates. I shared really the expansion of summer programs that we're going to have over 500 students on campuses this year. Talked about recognition and celebrations in May. I also talked about when we talk about safety, it's always an agenda item as well. I did share the need for increased behavior supports this year. I did let them know that we're looking at increasing a behavior analyst. And that we would continue with the counseling support that we've put in place as well. We're also, I shared with them that through the teens, so the Galt Teen Center and with our trustee and at Coonsey, we have organized, the teen center has organized a fentanyl awareness training for the community, parents and the community. It would be presented by Arrive Alive. That is the organization that came to the middle school this year, but that's already on the calendar for September 12th at 6:00 PM. That will be at McCaffrey. So we'll make sure to get a lot of advertisement out as the date comes sooner. The high school district, they updated definitely a lot of awards too. They said they're celebrating a lot of student awards for FFA. And Ag, they talked about, you know, trips the kids have gone on and, and then just, there's a lot of awards both at the high schools. and, and then just, there's a lot of awards both at the high schools. They're just great programs there. And then we also talked a little bit about the expansion of the, the Ag CTE at the, the middle school and they're excited for that as well. They shared some traffic needs at Liberty. They are looking, they're going to be working with the city. They want to paint Marengo Road in front of Liberty Ranch. They want to make that a loading and unloading zone only. And so they have to work with the city to do that. But I know many of you have high school students and, and you know how, how dangerous and busy that traffic can be. I think there's an area that they're going to put no parking. But they have a good, they shared a, a good design of how they could improve traffic there. So hopefully that will come soon. Maybe next year, that'd be great. And then the city manager, Lorenzo Hines, he shared that the city is still very interested in, in expanding Walker Park. And with that expansion, they are hoping to lease the district's property over there. He also shared that they're working on a grant as well. He's working with Congresswoman Doris Matsui and pursuing a five-point million dollar grant that would go towards that expansion. And he shared that they should know more about that in September. And so I, I have shared with him that we are, the district is pursuing the steps that we need to take to see if we'd be eligible to lease that property. So, so that was just a summary and we will meet again in August fourteenth. New school year.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any questions?
Um, I just wanted to thank the district for their support and collaboration on the Arrival Live. I got to attend it at the middle school and really felt like it was something that would benefit the community. So again, thank you for, for the partnership there.
Oh, definitely. And thank you for reaching out and, and doing that, making that connection to get it going. Cause it was very, it was a very good training and I, the more we can get to attend, be great.
Anybody have any, any other questions or anything for Lois on that? Then we can move to our, our business, uh, the routine matters, new business. Does there any donations we'd like to talk about?
Yes, I, I will. A donation and then a highlight on our human resources consent calendar. I'll start with donations. For McCaffrey Middle School, the PDL Youth Foundation donated twenty-three hundred for school site use. That is the Petri, Petri, oh, sorry, Padrino Deborah Lopez Youth Foundation. PDL and they, for any site use, twenty-three hundred dollars. Yeah. And then on our human resources consent calendar, I wanted to recognize a retirement. Deborah Mexner has been in the district for twenty-nine years. Yeah, she has served as an instructional assistant at Fair Sight. That's how she started. And then most of her career has been in the food and nutrition. She's worked at Fair Sight, Greer, Lake Canyon and River Oaks in the kitchen for twenty-nine years for the district. So wish her the best with retirement. Long time.
Okay. We move on. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I will make the motion.
All right. Thank you, Catherine. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, Tracy, what the second?
Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, one, two, four, five, one, the consent calendar, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Cagle.
I.
Casey Raboy.
I.
Annette Kunsy.
I.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
We go to the two, one, two point four, five, three, the expulsion for the twenty-one, twenty-two, oh, four, that needs to be tabled. And then we go to the two, one, two point four, five, four. Uh, the board action regarding student expulsion number twenty-two slash twenty-three dash oh, four. I get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Tracy. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Annette.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two, one, two, four, five, four, seconded by Annette Kunsy, Wesley Cagle.
I.
Casey Raboy.
I.
Catherine Harper.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then moving on to two, one, two point four, five, five, for consideration of approval. Uh, a public notice slash sunshine statement from the Galt Joint Elementary School District to Galt Elementary Faculty Association regarding the following articles. Hours evaluation process, leave salary, salary schedule procedure, preschool permit teacher.
So this month, this is an action item. Last month it was just information. And so we will be with approval. We will start the process of negotiating contract language changes, potential contract language changes for these articles. And we actually start negotiating with GFA tomorrow.
Can I get a, a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion for item, are we on two, one, two point four, five, five?
Okay, Casey, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Catherine?
Thank you. I have a motion from Casey Raboy to approve item number two, one, two, four, five, five, seconded by Catherine Harper, Wesley Cagle.
I.
Tracy Skinner.
I.
Annette Kunsy.
I.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
So then, next one is two, one, two point four, five, six, is a public notice that, uh, to initial public notice for Galt Joint Union Elementary District to California School Employee Association about the sunshine.
Mm-hmm. Yes. So this is with our classified union. First month is informational item, but these are the articles that we would like to negotiate with classified for this next school year. It would be leaves, layoff and reemployment, fringe benefits and wages. And so we'll bring this again to you in June for action.
Any questions for Lois on that? I just move on to the next, right? Two, one, two point four, five, seven, for consideration of approval of maintenance and operations shop, pre-construction services agreement.
Okay, so we, I've talked with the board about this within the last year or two. And I think we've, we showed you in the budget where we've been trying to save a little bit of money for this project. Are currently, are, we do not have a maintenance and operations shop. Our, our tools and our equipment, they're in two portable classrooms at Fair Sight. Um, and the, our, our large equipment trucks, riding lawn mowers and tractors and things like that are parked at the bus garage. And over the years, we've had a lot of theft and vandalism because they're just, they're out exposed. We don't have anywhere to store them. And so we have some cargo containers out there, but they are easily broken into. They're not alarmed. And so it's just, it's also just not safe the way that we have our, our equipment over at Fair Sight for our, our maintenance staff. And so we've been trying to save a little money over the last couple of years. Of course, things are expensive. And so we do have enough saved right now to start this. We are proposing a sixty by one hundred, a six thousand square foot pre-engineered metal building. And then site improvements that would be needed for a maintenance shop. It would be at the bus garage right now, where the, what we call the maintenance and operations yard and transportation yard. It would be on the same side. It would be a, a line with the bus garage. It would just be another engineered building on the other side of that. We would be able to park larger equipment in there. It would have a, a small office. It would have a, a small bathroom. And then everything else you need, the electrical and the, the tables you need for, for sanding and, and, and all of that. They would be able to get everything out of, out of the portables and moved over there. We advertised a request for proposal for this project. We had two requests that were submitted. One was from SMB James and one was from Rowan. Let me see. What was the, Rodan? Thank you. Let me get to that. It's for you here. So you have, what you have, I'll explain what you have here. You have a pre-construction services agreement. If the board approves that, and then behind that, you have our review of the process. And so we, do we have a scoring template that we use? Both general contractors, Roden and SMB James, they passed phase one. They moved to phase two. And then the following page gives you the scoring for phase two. SMB James did come out extremely ahead on this one, mainly because of their price proposal. If you look at the proposal evaluation, they were, you know, their, their price came in only at twenty-six hundred dollars for the pre-construction services proposal and Roden was twenty-one thousand. The lease, leaseback fee proposal, it's SMB was only three point five percent, Roden was six point five. And then also for the general conditions cost, SMB was twenty-five thousand and Roden was forty-two thousand. And so, you know, when you, when you're going for a lease, leaseback project, you don't necessarily have to choose the lowest, lowest bidder. It's something you definitely want to consider, but you also want to consider experience and knowledge. And so we have that both. We, we, we know SMB James who have partnership. We know they're a wonderful organization and they consistently come in lower for us too. And so you can see that, that it's really a, it was kind of a, of course, that we would recommend SMB James based on the experience and then the cost factor. Um, it is, the architect has given us an estimated cost to build this at one point four million dollars. And so we do, we do have that in, in budget right now. Nicole will show you that as well next month. Um, but it's taken us a couple of years to kind of keep some money aside and to have those funds.
Have any, uh, questions for Lois? Yeah, I know the, it'd be nice to get a good solid structure instead of.
Yeah.
Really easy to break in.
Uh-huh. It's happened to us multiple times. We've lost a lot of equipment over the years.
Okay.
And chain links and fence, they cut through it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. See, there's no more questions. Can I get a, a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve two, one, two point four, five, seven.
I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Kunsy to approve item number two, one, two, four, five, seven, seconded by Casey Raboy, Wesley Cagle.
I.
Tracy Skinner.
I.
Catherine Harper.
I.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Two, one, two point four, five, eight, the first reading of the following board policies, administrative regulations and bylaws.
So a lot of updated policies to bring to you this month, just a first reading. So just Donna and I, most of these are superintendent, educational services. I'll start and just going over some brief summaries for the, the ones that I have reviewed. And then if there's any direction or further clarification that we need to bring to you for the next meeting, we'll work on that. Looking at the charter school authorization, really the change is there. They've added timelines for, for board action. We have sixty days to have a public hearing to consider the level of support for a petition. If we were to receive a petition, there's a few other timelines that are noted as well in a new policy. And then on the page two, they've also added, page two and three, they've added a section on the denial of a petition and appeals. And so there's certain, there's four different areas there that a board can consider for denying a petition. But then there's also an appeal process that a petitioner can go through if they are not happy with the board's denial. And so it outlines, it outlines those steps and the reasons that you can deny and also the, how they would go about an appeal. The second policy is related to dismissal, suspension and disciplinary action. Most of this reflects new law related to classified employees. Now classified employees are, they are entitled to hearings, similar to certificated staff with the new law. And so that has been changed. That's added in here. Um, that is really for this policy. That was really the only change. The very bottom, there's a paragraph that they've added that classified employee that who timely requested hearing may only be suspended, dismissed based on the outcome of the hearing. And so they are allowed a hearing just as certificated staff are. And then for the third policy, this is conflict of interest on, on page two, really what has been added. There's four levels of a conflict of interest from campaign contributions. Really in summary, a board, a trustee could not accept a contribution of more than two hundred and fifty dollars. And so it outlines some of the, the reasons and some of the timeline of accepting anything under two hundred and fifty dollars as well too. But that's what was added for campaign contributions. And then number four, meetings and notices, there was quite a bit that was added towards the end of this policy. The sections are new, added for traditional teleconferencing, teleconferencing during a personal emergency and teleconferencing for just cause. And so now a trustee, there's a couple of different ways that you can teleconference without posting your location or without making your, your location where you're teleconferencing open to the public. So there are some situations now that you don't have to post on your front door. If you're at home or if you're out of town, you don't have to post on your hotel door, things like that. If the reason that you're teleconferencing meets these needs for personal or just cause. And there's some limitations there. How many times in a school year you can do it? And there's guidelines on what just cause, what, what it means. So those, that's what was added.
All right. Educational Services Board Policy four, zero, three, zero, non-discrimination in employment. And it also includes an admin regulation. This is just policy that's updating per new law. It adds reproductive health decision-making as a form of prohibited discrimination. It also, you'll notes in the admin regulations, we have designated the Ed Services Department, the Director of Educational Services will serve as the coordinator for non-discrimination for the district. The next one is Board Policy five, one, one, three, absences and excuses. And this is just an, also an update for new law. It adds that an excused absence for middle sus, middle school students can be for the purpose of participating in a civic or a political event. So that is new. And then it's also updated to clarify that absences for participation in religious exercise or to receive moral or religious instruction are excused. I did want to point out that in order for districts to receive the ADA for these absences, the governing boards required to first adopt a resolution. So what we will bring back to you next month, before you approve or decide to approve this board policies is we will bring back to you a resolution so that then we can consider approving those absences. The next one is five, one, three, one point four, one, use of seclusion and restraint. And we didn't currently have an administrative regulation, but we have been, we have been following federal IDEA guideline, guidance and law on that. And so it just is, you know, making clarifying that the limited exception when exclusion and restraint can be used, it cannot be applied longer than necessary to contain the dangerous behavior. And I do want you to know, it talks in there about the behavior, um, emergency response. It's called a BUR. And we have BUR reports. And so anytime if there, we have to do an emergency restraint on a student, that risk, that report is completed, signed by the site administrator, comes to the district and it is reviewed also. Parents are notified. We hold an IEP meeting if we look at the, at the current, at the current plan that need, that may need the behavior plan that may need to be adjusted. The other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, within this, this area is that we do our behavior analysts and one other employee, we have a certified CPI district trainers. That's the, the, the response that we use. And annually, our special education staff go through. and annually, our special education staff go through an eight-hour training to be updated to stay certified. So that, just know that in our school sites, and I believe some of our principals have actually also gone through C P I training, but you have to have the current training and, and certification in order to even to do this. The next one, board policy five-one-four-four is on discipline and admin regulation, it's new guidance from the U S Department of Education, and it just again talks about supporting students with disabilities and avoiding discriminatory discipline practices. Board policy five-one-four-four, suspension and expulsion due process, it's the due process part of ex- ex- um, suspension and expulsion, uh, expulsion. It um, a couple of updates, suspension does not be removal from a classroom, if a student's removed from the class by a teacher, that's not considered a suspension. And it um, also updates and adds definitions related to electronic acts as a mode of bullying, and so that's also been added for one of the causes for um, suspension. Um, let's see, admin regulation five-one-four-four-point-two, suspension and expulsion due process, but then again, this is just looking at students with disabilities, and it recommends if districts identifies ways to significantly reduce the use of exclusionary discipline, discipline and the proportion effect on students with disability, and it's in this um, A R that um, we do follow from the Office of Civil Rights and also from federal IDEA law, is that if a student with a disability or with an I E P has been suspended for ten days during the school year, we have a mandatory manifestation determination meeting, which means we need to hold an I E P to, to to determine if the behavior or the discipline incident was directly as a result of the, of the student's disability. And so we are guided by federal law to follow those guidelines. Like I'm rushing through these, so you can stop me if you have any questions. Uh, board policy six-one-seven-three, education for homeless children, we do um, we currently have Jane, um, Kinner is our school social worker at Lake Canyon, and she is our homeless and foster youth liaison. The new law is also mandating that districts establish um homeless education program and annual training for staff who work directly with homeless students, especially focusing on our office, the secretaries that enroll students and our, and our teachers. The other thing that it um, that it's a new law is guiding is that we need to do an annual, an annual survey to um, determine if families may become homeless. And this year, our school social workers and counselors, we went ahead and piloted one um, just a few months ago, you may have gotten that survey home. And so then, after the spring survey, then we will be in the packet that the parents get at the beginning of each year, and so that they'll be able to complete that. Um, otherwise, we don't know if a student is homeless except if the first time they enroll in our district. And so this way, we can kind of keep updated, and, and we've been really working really carefully and with the SCOE and with our, with our liaison, and we've been providing some really uh, um, some new, new services and new supports for our homeless students, we had, I believe it was Nicole was at nineteen thousand dollars in a homeless, it was one-time homeless funds. Twenty-seven thousand, thank you, twenty-seven thousand dollars, and we've had, I believe, three years to spend it, but it's, we've used those funds for things like additional um, educational support for some of our homeless students. We had a family that lost their home in a fire, we um, we, we were able to purchase gift cards for food to help them in the, in the beginning stages and things like that, so we're really appreciative that we have that homeless liaison for our district. Um, education for foster youth, it's really just updating um, updating the, the, some of the policy, it, it makes sure it requires district to offer now our foster students a transportation if needed, that was already part of the law for our homeless students, and then most of the other really I saw related to high school, and it wasn't really relative to our district. And then the last one, board policy six-one-seven-seven is the summer learning programs. And that is the one that um, it kind of talks about the regulations about who, what students, you know, the priority for enrollment in summer learning programs that um, that we can offer summer learning programs and in um, during the summertime. But the one thing that I was working with Nicole is looking at the funding source that lists, it can include expanded learning, disbanded learning opportunity program. And so originally I had selected, I think in, in your, in your um, drafts for first reading, it said option one, it was for districts that were not required to offer summer school. But um, we're looking into it with C D E, because option two was the district was required to offer summer school pursuant to ed code, and those were for districts that are accepting expanded learning funds. And so what we're doing right now is we're wanting to get clarification from the Department of Education that possibly we would be able to use expanded learning opportunity funds for some academic summer services. You know, right now, we, we have the after-school services um, for G L, and then we provide that thirty-day enrichment program, and it needs to last nine hours. Well, we're, for recommending option one or two, we want to make sure that uh, you know, if, if we can offer um, using the, offering an academic program, we want to make sure that that's reflected here on board policy, so I'll bring an update for you on that one. Um, in a nutshell, that's kind of what they were, but if you have any questions now or email me, you can also do that.
You. For summary of anybody have any questions for?
I just had one question on the charter school petition, historically, has there been one presented or few and far between, I guess, yeah?
Been a long time ago.
We, we didn't have one that ever followed all the way through.
True, yeah.
I'm there, I want to say what, six, seven, eight years ago, there might have been talks of one, but it never went to the board, right? Yeah, then, was it Fair Sight? Yeah.
So I remember, I remember that talk.
Mm-hmm, it's a lot of work to follow through with the petition, there, it's, it's not easy to open a charter school, or to be prepared to present a proposal for, you know, petition. Mm-hmm.
Um, hey, was there any uh, public comment ever turned in?
No, there's no request for public comment.
Nope. Does anybody have anything for a possible pending agenda item? See, and that um, when we talked about the cast and we talked about the Liberty Ranch traffic it problem, are the schools, our schools having any traffic issues?
Well, I think we, you know, before and after school, I think is always there's, yeah, and, I mean, I, they're busy, yes, but I don't think we've identified anything that really the city could help us with, like Liberty Ranch, how uh, just the way it was designed, their major street to make that it's a very busy street there and, and the way it's
I went by there today, so I'm
Yeah, um, the one that we, I recall a couple of years ago at Lake Canyon, we did work with the city to um, remember that Laura, we had the city out and they helped the, the yes, that it was, it was too dangerous at the crosswalks, there wasn't enough of the red zone of the no parking in front and behind the crosswalks, that's the most recent one, and the city, they really helped us, they came out, they took pictures, they evaluated it, and they did, um, they extended the um, fire lane or the no parking, so it's, it's safer, but I I haven't heard of any, I mean, I hear a lot of, um, oh, something else that came up is to increase um, traffic patrol, the caps, the grandma cops and things like that, that we had, um, the city had before COVID, if we could start, the city could start that back up again, because it did help when they were present. Um, and you know, they said sometimes they, you know, I, I guess when, when families or parents or drivers are not um, following the law, the traffic law in front of schools especially, they said they just need to restart really enforcing it, and issuing tickets if that's what it takes, and then the word spreads that you can't make the U-turn in front of the school, or you know, those, those kinds of things, and so we do, we call periodically, I know our principals do too, and um, you know, it's time to have somebody out in front for a couple of days.
Thanks, I know, um, I have my calf free in the morning, Carlos is out there, I've seen him quite a few uh, morning guy, it goes time, uh, today, because I usually work, but today I picked my son up and it was a little bit crazy today.
Yeah.
It, it was, I don't know if it was because it was Wednesday and it was
I think Wednesdays are the craziest is what I, I
Yeah, it was uh, it took like fifteen, twenty minutes to get home, and it's usually only take five.
Yeah.
Where normally there's a little bit larger gap in
Yeah.
The high school got out at one too.
Yes.
Oh, the high school got out one today too, okay, so
Must have been.
Streets were busy today.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
One little question, um, something that I should have brought up with the cast meeting, but I think about it, is that intersection on Lake Park and Park Terrace.
Mm-hmm.
You have crosswalks o- only on two of the sides, it really needs to be a four-way stop and four-way crosswalk for the, it more so for the pedestrians and for the traffic, but I often, um, when I drive that way, I get um, students um, walking diagonal. Well, that's, that's an issue, because they could be hit by cars, because it isn't a four-way stop, but usually it's the pedestrians I see in danger, because they're not they're not in a crosswalk, um, and then you only have cars stopping one way. So, I mean, I've always seen that
Yeah.
as a problem.
That's Lake Park and Park Terrace.
Yeah, and you, you have a lot of the students though are probably walking to Liberty right there. And it's, it's probably more so in the morning, but you know, also in the afternoon, it says they don't want to put stop signs in if, if an intersection is just busy twice a day, you know, they want the intersection to be busy, but it's students walking, I mean.
Flashing warning, um, when they're on the crosswalk, it flashes.
Something, but, but
No.
Yeah, but you only have, students will just cross the street wherever they want. Yeah.
We can, we can bring it up, definitely.
We can always say
We don't have to wait until the August meeting, we can bring it up, I think there's a process, they evaluate and see what they could do.
You know, I've often, you know, I see kids crossing there for the year, decades, and yeah, I just, I'm just waiting for someone to get
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else, anything pressing? Seeing uh, none, no, no, any agenda items then, and then uh, we will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thanks. Eight-thirty.